This is the February 16th, 2021, meeting of the Acushnet Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped. I'm opening the meeting by roll call vote. Once I call your name, please respond here. Diane?
Hi.
Nancy?
Here.
Here.
Danielle?
Here.
Jerry?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
And we also have Deana Brassa, the library director on Zoom as well.
Here.
All right. We do have a quorum, and our first item on the agenda today is the review and approval of the minutes from January the 12th. Does anyone have any questions or comments on those? If not, we need a motion.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting.
I can add.
All those in favor, by roll call. Diane?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Danielle?
Hi.
Jerry?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
And myself. I. Thank you. Okay, next, we have the budget.
I sent you all a snapshot of the budget as of Friday, which was the 12th, and nothing has changed since then. I just wanted to point out a couple of things. I think you can see that the salaries portion is right on target with where we need to be for this point of the fiscal year. But dropping down into operating, I did just want to mention that we're 63% spent out for energy. That's roughly where we are at this time of year, because in the winter, we do see our highest ever source bills. So I don't want anyone to worry about that. I think that's pretty normal for us to be at around the 60% mark. For February, the ever-source bill was the highest bill we've had this fiscal year at 1307. It's higher than last year at the same time by about 16%. That's the increase, and I think that's because we're using the walkway a lot more this winter than we had to use it last winter. Knock on wood, the walkway is actually working, so that's great news. But we are, you know, having to turn it on quite a bit more often with all these little snowstorms we've been having, or it's snow. Some of them aren't even storms. It's just like, you know, snow was all day long, and you get like an inch of accumulation, but we've had the walkway running for the whole time. And then we've had a couple of larger storms, as you know, so I think it's attributed to that. And if it would just stop snowing already, I think we'll see a much smaller bill in March, and we'll get back, you know, on track with spending in the energy line. But this is pretty normal for us, so don't worry about that. I also wanted to point out that, yes, we are 104% spent out from the material line. As you know, we do expect to spend that out early or halfway around the halfway point of the fiscal year. I did go over purposefully, because we do have an overage in the sales line. You might remember. I think we've talked about it since too, but the sales bill was a little bit less this fiscal year than they had estimated because of a grant that they got that they applied to all of our assessment fees, all of the library's assessment fees. So we won't be spending any more out of that sales line this fiscal year, so I took the overage from that and applied it to the material line. I'm going to save that overage, or what's left of that overage in the sales line for now, just in case we run into a problem down the line with energy or something else going over. But other than that, I think we're at a pretty good spot at 62.9% spent out. So unless you have any specific questions about that, that's, I think we're good.
Anybody have any questions? Comments? We need a motion.
Motion to accept.
I'll second it.
All in favor, by roll call. Diane?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Danielle?
Hi.
Jerry?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
And myself. I. Thank you. Next on the agenda for old business is the reopening plan.
Well, the only major difference is, as you know, today, the whole staff is back in the building for regular hours. We've been following the Selectman's partial remote plan since mid-December, so after two months, they have voted to bring staff back regular hours in-house, so no more remote work. As you all know, I appreciated the opportunity that the Selectman gave for staff to be spread out, especially around the holidays, and in that surge we saw slightly before and then after the holidays. So I think, you know, all of the staff here felt great about the fact that we were given the opportunity to work remote. Oh, why is my battery running low? Hang on. Boy, technology problems left and right.
It is definitely a technology-challenging day. For sure.
That's what happens when you unplug the laptop and forget to plug it back in. Okay. Anyway, sorry about that. So like I said, you know, we all were happy to have the opportunity to work partially remote, but boy, I think we're all really happy to be back in the building regular hours too, because it's really hard to just have two or three of us in the building at a time. That's been a big challenge, especially as we've become busier over the past month or so, which is normal any year. We sort of see a lull in November, December, for the holidays, and then things pick back up in mid-January, and this year was no different. So I'm really happy that everybody's back for regular hours, and I think the rest of the staff feels that way too. So we've got a big building, which is great. It allows us to spread out. Now, we just have to sort of remember what it's like to be in here with five people instead of just one or two other people. So we just have to be super mindful of that, and the staff here, as you know, has been great about doing that all along. So we'll just get back to how things were before, and hopefully all will be well. So other than that, I don't have too much to add. The numbers, you know, for COVID, as you all know, I'm sure, have been, you know, lessening over the past couple of weeks. The percentage of positive cases has been dropping a little bit. I think if we could see that continue to happen, and if Acushnet could bump down from the red, which we've been in for months now, into, say, the yellow, I think that would be, if that could happen for two or three weeks consistently, I think it would be a good time to approach the Board of Health again about reopening for browsing by appointment. It's been a year next month since we've been closed, and, you know, no one ever expected that to happen, of course. But I think if we could see, could see a trend of cases dropping in the area, then I think it would be a good time to, again, just by appointment, but talk about opening for browsing. That's gone really well with computer use. When we, you know, we've been doing the computers by appointment since October, and that's been going really well. And I think that we could do it very safely for patrons and for the staff, if we do it by appointment to start at least. I know we have a lot of patrons who are anxious to get into browse. The staff would like to see that happen also. So I think if we can, if that downward trend continues, then I think it'll be a good time to talk to the Board of Health about doing that. So just so you know where my thoughts are on that, I would love to see that we be able to do that, possibly, you know, late March, early April, if the numbers continue to drop. And that's all I have for reopening.
Sounds like a good plan. Does anyone have anything to add on that before we move forward? Okay. The next order of business is the fines, or the fine-free period, or?
Yeah, it's hard to believe. We were talking about that two months ago, and that it's already, we, you know, you all voted for that two-month window to the end of February, and here we are again. And nothing's changed on our end in terms of, you know, I don't have anything new to add to the conversation in terms of what other libraries are doing. I think everyone is sort of just, everyone's sort of staying status quo with what they've been doing. So the libraries that were charging fines are still charging fines, and the libraries that haven't been charging fines are still not charging fines. So I really think it's up to you all of, if you want to keep it fine-free for another two months. I mean, I know people appreciate the fact that we're fine-free. You know, I think that, I mean, who wouldn't appreciate that? You know, and for the most part, I don't think anyone's taking advantage of the fact that we're fine-free by hanging on to material longer. I really don't think that's happening. So, I mean, I think it just comes down to a matter of, do you extend the courtesy a little bit longer, or do you say, okay, we've been fine-free for almost a year, and it's time to charge fines again? Because it'll be, you know, a year in mid-March since we've been waiving fines. So, and maybe we've waived fines that go back to January and February too, just because it's easier on staff from January, February of last year. So there's some bonus fine waiving that's happened.
What are, what are everyone's thoughts?
There's no really big problems of people not returning items on time.
I don't think we're really seeing that. I mean, I think the people who aren't getting them back in on time, because, you know, obviously, we've got that week-long quarantine period, but we can still tell that the thing, it's not because of the quarantine that the items are late. The items were late before the quarantine, and then are later because of the quarantine. But I don't think, the people who are returning them late to begin with, I don't think are intentionally turning them late. Like, I don't think anyone's taking advantage of any items a little bit longer. I don't, we might be seeing that a little bit, but I think it's the same people who are returning items late before, you know, and then, and paying the fine. So I don't think anyone's, in other words, taking advantage of us being fine-free. I think it's just, it happens that, you know, you get something for two weeks, and you think you'll be able to renew it, and then it doesn't renew, because somebody's waiting for it, and you can't, you know, read it in two weeks. So, you know, normally, that would, you know, maybe cost you 50 cents to keep it a little bit longer, and now it's not, you know, at the moment, it's not costing you anything. But sometimes, I do wonder sometimes, if you, if you, if you keep waiving the fines, at what point do you just say that you do away with fines, period, forever? Like, because it's not, I don't think it's necessarily, at this point, I don't think it's necessarily because of the pandemic that the items are being returned late. I think they're just being returned late. Like, that's, is it the same way that they would in normal time?
Yeah.
So before, the idea was, well, because of the pandemic, we won't charge anything, because people couldn't use the library for two months, you know, when we initially were closed. And then it just seems like, oh, people aren't comfortable coming out. But the people who are later, people who have been coming here since the summer, when we started takeout in the first place. So it's not, I don't think it's a, they're not comfortable coming out, and so they can't get here to return on time. But again, I mean, is it a nice thing to do right now? Of course it is. You know, I think it makes everyone feel nice that they're, you know, people are the ones who don't know that we aren't charging fines when they hear at the window that they won't owe anything. Every, that's good feelings for everyone. It makes the staff feel nice to say it, and it makes the person feel nice to, you know. But again, at what point is it, okay, enough is enough already? You know, I don't, I don't know.
I think it would be nice to keep extending the courtesy as long as the library continues to operate as it is. Like, once you make those appointments for people to come into browse, then maybe it's time to rescind the rule.
Good with that, too.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yep, yep.
Gives everybody a little more time.
Yeah. And I totally understand and appreciate that point of view. So that's even, you know, that's, I totally get where you're coming from with that, and can see that that, you know, might make sense too, as we're planning to reopen at some point. It's announced that, you know, that as we continue to shift into a more normal way to use the library, that we reintroduce fines at that point, too. So I totally get where you're coming from with that.
And Danielle, you're thinking, like, when we reopen for browsing by appointment, at that point, which would be the back-to-normal sort of thing? Is that what your thought is?
That, yes, that is what my thought is.
Not reopen, like, we're back to normal?
No, no. Once the browsing by appointment.
That's what I thought.
A small semblance of normalcy.
Of normal, yeah. I think that's a, I mean, that's, does everyone agree with that? Does everyone, anyone have anything else? I mean, I think, I think that's kind of, you know, a good place to start, because I think we do need to go back to normal, and I think we do need to start charging fines again. But like you said, the courtesy is still good, especially where, you know, we're not really back to normal. So I, yeah, I think that's, that's probably good. Okay, so let's make a motion.
Do you want to make a motion in depth, not to that point in time, or do you want to make another two months? Not to exceed two months?
Well, if we're going to, if we're going to, as the, as the board, wait until the browsing by appointment, even if we extended it two months, I think we're still going to be just kicking the can. If, if the browsing by appointment doesn't happen till, let's say, June, we're just going to be kicking it to June anyway. Am I right? So maybe we'll just make a motion to extend it until the library opens for browsing by appointment.
That's fine, fine with me, yep.
That work?
Yes.
I can't make the motion, though.
Oh, you can't?
No.
Then I'll make the motion that we waive fines until such time as we reopen for browsing by appointment.
I second it.
All in favor, by roll call. Diane?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Danielle?
Hi.
Jerry?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Myself. I. Thank you. So I don't think we'll need to vote on that again, Deana.
Right, correct.
So you're all set? So when we end up having the browsing by appointment, you know, on that meeting agenda, we'll just make sure that we'll?
Yeah, it could, it could be written in as part of the plan of reopening by appointment.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay, new business. We have the bandwidth.
Yes, so our public computers, as well as the staff computers, all run on the sales library network. Like, so everything that we do is through, is through them. And they, when sort of identifying in their strategic plan for this past year, what they could do to improve library services, one of the thing, one of the pieces that was identified as a priority would be to increase bandwidth throughout sales libraries. The American Library Association recommends that there be a minimum of 100 MBPS for libraries serving a population of 50,000 people or under, and we currently are at 50 MBPS. So that would just megabytes per second, I think. So we're at about halfway of where the American Library Association is recommending our bandwidth be. So Sales did the legwork on this to figure out how much it would cost libraries to increase bandwidth, and right now, we're looking at an increase of $642 per year to the telecommunications portion of our sales assessment, which is that sales line we spoke of earlier in the budget discussion. To me, to double what we have for $642 is a pretty good deal. Just to backtrack a little, what the bandwidth means, I mean, ultimately, a greater bandwidth increases our internet connectivity speeds. It's not, the bandwidth isn't the speed in which the internet runs, but a larger bandwidth, or a greater bandwidth, would allow us the opportunity to have our internet speeds increase. That would help with our Wi-Fi, which people are still using from the parking lot, even while the building is closed. So I think increasing but increase the signal for the Wi-Fi ultimately. So I think it's a great option for us to take advantage of right now. Unfortunately, we didn't get all this information from Sales in time to submit it, the original FY22 budget draft that was submitted. So I did speak about it about a week and a half ago with the town administrator, just to get her thoughts on that, because I wasn't sure what it would mean. It's only $642, but I wasn't sure what it would mean in terms of the FY22 budget. So she told me to revise it and to submit the budget to her with the $642 in the sales line, and that she would have that for the finance committee when she was, at the time, putting together the packets for the finance committee. So I did adjust the sales line. I sent you a copy of that, so that you can see the adjustment, and it bumps our overall budget from $278,118 to $278,760. It brings us from a 0.1% increase to a 0.3% increase, which seems very, very small, and still practically level-funded, as we were asked to do. So I think it's something that we'd be silly not to take advantage of for that cost as well. And in addition to that, initially, Sales had thought there would be an upgrade cost, because it might require us having a new modem, and they weren't sure what the upgrade fees were going to be. Could be anywhere from like $30 to close to $100. But it turns out, they got a grant, so they're going to write off the, using the grant money, pay for these upgrade fees for all of sales libraries. So it's, we won't even have to pay the fee to upgrade, which is pretty great, too. So basically, because I changed the budget draft, that's what I need you to approve, is approving the change to the budget draft. I can't imagine that you'd be opposed to increasing the bandwidth. But if you are, feel free to say so. But I can't imagine that would be an issue for anybody. And I hope that the $642 increase to the budget isn't an issue for any of you either, but of course, please discuss it, if you're not happy with that.
Does anyone have any questions or comments about that at all?
No problem with that.
No.
I mean, it could possibly mean, when it comes time to present to the finance committee, that they ask us to deduct something from the budget in exchange for the 642 increase to the sales line. I didn't deduct anything in the draft. I just increased $642. So hopefully, that can stay as-is, because it would be very difficult, as you know, to cut anymore, or to trim anywhere in the budget.
I agree. It's pretty lean as it is.
It's pretty lean.
Not, not much to be able to trim.
Right.
Okay, we need a motion.
Make a motion to accept the increase in the FY22 budget by $642. I'll second it.
All in favor, by roll call. Diane?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Danielle?
Hi.
Jerry?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Myself. I. Thank you.
Thank you all.
The Director's report.
So really quick, I just wanted to highlight a few things from the report for you. I mentioned that the town has hired a consultant service to do a non, or excuse me, a union wage and classification study, so for union employees. Some of you will remember, we went through that process for non-union employees a few years back, and now the town is doing it for union staff. So we have seven union staff members here at the library, and we all took part, they and myself, took part in a presentation via Zoom a couple of weeks ago with the consulting firm. And they are now filling out position analysis questionnaires, describing what it is that they do. I have to review those. They were due to me on Friday. I haven't reviewed them yet, because we weren't here yesterday, so I'll review them today, hopefully, so I can submit those over to the town administrator, so that she can submit them to the consulting service review. It's about a 90-day process, and it may involve interviews via Zoom with either myself or with the union staff, with the consulting firm, to sort of fill in any gaps that the questionnaires don't answer. It's a lengthy process, but, I mean, in the end, hopefully, the staff get, you know, see some good results from it, and that it's a positive experience for everybody. So I just wanted to make you aware that that's happening. And I also just wanted to quickly point out that we had a seventh-grade teacher who's always great about reaching out to us to collaborate with things. But she teaches over at Ford, and she reached out to us regarding wanting all of her students, which she's got about 100 students, so all of them to be able to read the same book at the same time. Was that possible through any of our online platforms? And it is through Hoopla. So we, once we figured that out, and she had selected the book that fits with their curriculum, which fortunately was available on Hoopla, we were able to make sure that all of her students either had library cards already, and that they were up to date, if they already had them, or if they didn't already have library cards, get them. All in all, we ended up issuing about 60 new cards or replacement cards, and we updated a couple dozen more. So they're now in the middle of their project. It seems to be going well. She seems pleased with it, and, you know, hopefully, it'll open up the door for some more collaboration with either, you know, her or any other teachers from the schools. We're happy to help with anything like that, you know, as we can. It felt like a sort of normal thing to be doing, which was nice. And I also wanted to point out that we did receive our state certification for this fiscal year, which is always good news, even if you know that the answer is yes, you are certified. It's still nice to be told that. So we're all set with our state certification, and we'll be receiving the first of the two award payments within the next few weeks. And so that's good, too, because we're using that money to supplement what we need to spend on material for this fiscal year. I also wanted to mention that our Bean Stack Challenge regarding the snowballs is still going really strong. We now have about 2,000 snowballs on the library's windows, so if you drive by, take a look. Sitting in here right now, yes, I definitely feel snowed in, because I'm surrounded by windows with snowballs on them. So ultimately, what that means is that Acushnet readers have logged over 30,000 minutes so far of reading this year, and that's pretty impressive that people are doing that. So we have a lot of active readers in town, which is wonderful. We still have a couple of taken, or excuse me, make-and-take kits available that follow along with a sort of Valentine's theme, the Sailor's Valentines, which isn't really a, doesn't necessarily have to be for Valentine's Day, that we put out this month for teens and adults. Those have been really popular and well-received, and it's thanks to the friends that we have the material for that. So we still have some kits available, so people can stop by to get their kit to make a Sailor's Valentine. We also have a couple of kids' crafts that have come out this week for, or to sort of tie into school vacation. So there is a So there is a, um, snowman keychain craft for older kids. And then there is a penguin paper craft, a popping penguin paper craft for kids that will be coming out. Either today or tomorrow. And finally, like every year, we have tax forms. People are always asking and they start calling like basically January second wanting to know when we're getting tax forms. And so we do have state and federal tax forms available, plus the instruction booklets for anyone who's looking for tax forms. So keep us in mind, if you're in need, we're handing them out at the window, super easy. And that's about it, unless you had any questions for me from the report.
I don't have anything, anyone else?
No.
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 Please.
Do we want to set the, um, next meeting date?
I had noted March sixteenth, if possible, if that works for people, that's a Tuesday. That's good, Tuesdays work for me.
It's good for me, does it, does that work for everyone else?
Yeah.
Checking and should be, yeah.
Okay.
Still noon, does that still work for everyone?
Yep.
Yep, yep.
That's good. Yep.
You guys are all easy.
I know. That's great.
Tuesday, March sixteenth at noon. Via Zoom.
Yes.
We won't know what to do when we're in person again.
I know.
I know, I haven't met any of you in person.
That crazy, like, it just doesn't seem like possible, but yep, here it is.
Crazy.
Yeah.
All right, if anybody, uh, if nobody has anything else. And you need a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor by roll call, Diane?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Danielle?
Hi.
Jerry?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Myself, aye. This February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the Akushanit Public Library Board of Trustees is officially adjourned. It is twelve forty-four. Thank you.
Thank you all. Bye.